Well, it's six o'clock. And so, once again, good evening to everyone. And I will call to order the Monday, May 19, 2025, City Council Meeting, pro-call.
Yeah.
We do have a public comment period. So before, because we do have a big crowd, so let me, let me just talk for a second. If you're here for something that's already on the agenda, i.e. brush pickup, then I will allow public comment while we're talking about brush pickups. So you don't have to come up right now. If you want to talk during that time, it would probably be more, more beneficial to talk during the time that we actually will discuss the actual decisions that we have to make. When that time comes in, especially with the amount of people we have, it's three minutes. So you'll come up to the, to the front, you'll give your name, your address, and then I'll, I actually have a timer here, you'll talk for three minutes. It may feel rude when I go, I'm sorry ma'am, sorry, you're three minutes up, but please be respectful, because as you see, there may be more people behind you that's interested in talking. Is there any public comment that maybe doesn't have to do with this? Yes, sir?
Mike Johnson.
Yes, sir.
And I live at 208 West Bush here in Prairie Grove. And my issue is speeding on Bush Street and running the stop signs at Neil, Mock, and Kate Smith. And we've had numerous post calls. There have been numerous calls to the Police Department about speeding. I've offered the opportunity for the Police Department to set in my east driveway, which they've done. But the running of the stop signs and speeding is not going to be solved by the Police Department. And they've got a big area to cover. There's no, no way they can watch just Bush Street all day long and the speeding that goes on there. So I asked the City Council, what's the solution to that? Because it doesn't, it didn't get any better. And I've come to the conclusion, well, before I get to the conclusion, there is a sidewalk on West Bush that runs about six inches to a foot from Bush Street. There's kids that walk down through there, going to school, and after school, going home. There's kids walking down Mock Street. I personally have witnessed several times where kids have come close to being hit by people running the stop signs at Russian Box specifically. But it occurs at Kate Smith and also, probably more often at Kate Smith. And there's people that pull up to the stop sign at Kate Smith and stop. And until they get to the new speed marker and equipment down at the school, probably reach forty-five, fifty miles an hour before they slow down to the speed limit or twenty-five. I don't know what the solution is. I don't think police watching it is necessarily the solution. The thing in my, myself and my neighbors have come to the conclusion, you're almost going to have to put speed bumps into slow people down. It isn't a problem during school, because the traffic is significant enough that people are driving the speed limit. But between the school hours is when the real problem occurs. And then after about five o'clock, it gets worse. And like I said, I don't, I don't think the police are the solution. And I would ask the City Council to consider doing something beyond that.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we need to do something. So, thank you.
You still have time.
Oh, I don't have time?
You have thirty seconds. You have thirty seconds.
There's some of my neighbors that are here, I don't know if they want to speak or not. Lucky, you got anything to say?
I'm Lockard Chambers, I live at 102 East Bush Street. My wife spends a lot of time sitting due to her health conditions she has right now. And she witnessed Saturday, there were fourteen dump trucks coming through on Bush Street, going to one of the construction sites west of town. Of those trucks, we witnessed six of them, different trucks, running through thirty to forty mile per hour, blowing through all three stop signs on Bush Street. All kinds of kids up and down the street, dog walkers, people out for a walk, families out. No regard for them whatsoever. Now, my wife recorded this, she put it on Facebook, some of you in this room may have seen it, may have received it, it's been sent out by several people, one of the trucks just blaring through. That's a constant on Bush Street. And it's a thoroughfare to get to the west side of town, a lot of people go through it. What the answer is, I don't know. But speed bumps, dips, something along that line, they slow them down. As Mr. Johnson indicated, when school's in session, there is enough traffic that people slow down. But once it's gone and it just paves out and everybody gets away, it picks back up again.
Mr. Chambers, will you, will you describe what, and I'll give you more time if I have to extend it. What, what do you mean by while school's in session? So we're talking Monday through Friday, from eight in the morning to four o'clock? Like, it's not a problem, it's just after, a problem in the evenings?
Occasionally. It's that period, people going to school and dropping off.
Right.
And then in, in the morning, and then in the afternoon, it's the same situation. When school lets out, traffic's pretty controlled.
Gotcha.
There's quite a bit of traffic, but there's enough.
The traffic is.
Now, occasionally, there's somebody that's in a hurry during that time period, and they pick it up. There's always a really large problem. It's in those void periods when traffic's not very heavy, like Saturday morning. You know, people may be going to town or going shopping or doing things along that line. That's when it really picks up. When traffic's at its worst, these guys are in a hurry. You know, they're all apparently going to the same jobs. So, but that's been, that's one day out of many that we witnessed. And with some of the proposed construction going to the west side of town, some of the big proposed housing developments, just going to get worse.
Yes, sir.
And it's a matter of time that we have something happen that's going to be regrettable by some of us, just to even see it. So, but please, let's try to work, put our heads together, try to come up with a solution to solve the problem. And make it better for everyone involved, everyone who lives in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Glenn Norwood, and I live at 216 West Bush Street. So, just to add to that, it's, it's not only about school time. Literally, she's called the Police Department so much, they know her by name. They're like, oh, that's the Nora Woods. So, but she's made numerous calls, and I think they came and watched. But it's kind of, it's pretty much anytime. It's not just school time. Because every morning when I get out to go to the office, it's, you see them leave that stop sign, they are hammered down. And it's all the time. When you look out the window and you see people, they are literally flying. And it's not twenty-five, it's forty-five, fifty. And sometimes we'll be nosy. We'll go down there with a speed digital sign, is just to see how fast they're going. It's forty plus. So, I don't know, you know, you can set a police car there all the time if you want, but there has to be some kind of resolution. And I was, I agree with them, you know, all, all the streets around here are important, but maybe around the school itself. I mean, just not Bush, but maybe Mock and all these other schools. Maybe there's something that's incorporated that speed bumps or, what did you call those?
Speed rumbles.
Rumble strips, yeah, something like that, just around the school itself. Because pretty much anymore, that whole square is nothing but, you know, viney grove, all of that. So, just something to maybe just, you know, make people slow down a little bit.
Yes, sir.
Because he is right, a lot of people walk, run, we even see the mayor run. You know, so a lot of people come up and down that street, and it's not, hey, we're just a bunch of grumpy old neighbors. You know, it's about, someone eventually is going to get hurt. And it may not be the best result, so anyways, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, one, one final point, I think Lucky brought it up, is.
I'm gonna give you the minute that Mr. Norwood.
We're claiming my time. They, with the construction west of Prairie Grove, the dump trucks are a significant problem, as well as the other traffic that gets associated with all the construction west of town. And one thing that we do need to think about it is that dump truck traffic coming right through the middle of town. So, consider that too in your deliberations, please.
Appreciate that, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I would like a clear, a question for them. Would you say the percentage is mostly dump trucks? I mean, I saw the video from Marcia K. sent it to me.
No, it's cars.
It's not just, okay.
It just happens to be dump trucks.
Yeah, that's, that happens to be what she videotaped, but the majority are cars and motorcycles.
And I think that street's actually no trucks at all.
Well, that was where I was going, but if it's not just.
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
Well, we'll, we'll get together, we'll, we'll talk about that, Jesus. Anyone else before we move on to public comment?
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Steve Philek, I'm at 662 Pila Marie. And in a couple of days, we'll be a one-year resident of the town. We just moved in almost a year ago from Minneapolis. You might pick up a little bit on the accent. I'm representing the golf cart owners in the, in the, in the town. And there are two of us here tonight, and a couple of other folks that, that the mayor was conversing with, and we're trying to figure out how we can legally drive street-legal golf carts on the street. I have the information on the golf carts, I have a title for them. The, the carts that we had purchased are, are street legal. They have turn signals, brake lights, horns, the whole nine yards. The resolution in town here, the eighty, eight dot three six dot zero one, of course, doesn't include, and that was emailed and you were conversing with, on Antonio, that doesn't include the use of golf carts. The average speed in town, as most of you all know, is twenty-five miles an hour, with only a few exceptions of thirty and forty-five, thirty-five and forty-five. We just want to be able to continue to commute through the town in a orderly, proficient manner on, on the carts. These even have seatbelts. So for, for the lack of information, and I was conversing with one of the other officers, and I'd like to talk to the chief, we would really like to get to some kind of happy resolution. The state of Arkansas no longer allows, no longer, on their statute, fourteen fifty-four, fourteen ten, they don't require you license them. But we can license them if the city of Prairie Grove wants us to. We'll, we'll put a, we'll put a plate on it and pay taxes on it and allow us to traverse through the city. Like I, like I said, the average speed limit in town is twenty-five. The golf carts do almost thirty. They're not really golf carts, they're recreational carts. The ones that you can't take on a golf course are the ones that are street legal. The ones you can take on a golf course are the ones that are not street legal. They don't have any brake lights, and I mean, turn signals, they might have lights, but they, they won't be able to manage or average the average speed in town. So, we can get some kind of happy medium to, allow us to continue to traverse through the city. And, and when we, I've had mine for almost a year, I've got almost a thousand, over a thousand miles on it, just driving through town. I've literally been up and down every street in this town. And, and I love driving around, we love driving around. We, we have, some folks have music on there, and we keep it down to a dollar or, we just kind of cruise around and enjoy the, enjoy the, enjoy the town and all it has to offer. So, just want to get some kind of conversation going, and, and or catch up with the chief, and maybe come up with some kind of resolution between the state and the city to allow us to continue to use the carts.
Yes, sir.
Well, have you been ticketed for this?
No, sir.
You just want to get ahead of it?
Yes, sir, well, we, we, we initially, when we purchased them, we were initially checked in with one or two officers on the street, out in the public, and there was a few phone calls made to the City Hall saying, we don't have a problem with you. Now, all of a sudden, it's my understanding that someone complained, and we're now being, we literally got stopped by one of the officers saying, can't ride them on city streets anymore. Just finish up your business and go back to your home. So, that's, that's, that's where we just recently bumped into.
And when we say recent, Wednesday, Thursday, something like, we've just been talking the last two or three days. And so, we're still waiting to hear a little bit more from Stephen on a legal side. And truthfully, like, generally speaking, we don't vote on something the night of. We take some time, so it's, it's these conversations we're having. But what it looks like is that the state has moved it to the municipality. So the municipality gets to choose if they want golf carts on their street or not. Now, from the interpretation from Chief Workman, because it talks about any unregistered vehicles. So, and that's why, Keith, right?
Steve.
That's, that's our, Mrs. Steve. And that's where Steve's talking about, well, we can register them, we can insurance, we can all do that.
Well, we have insurance on them. Well, that's automatic, because you don't want to run into anybody on a, on a cart like that.
And I, and I want to talk about what police officer told you you could or couldn't, because I, generally speaking, like, we have an issue in front of us today.
Right.
And I don't want to talk about something I don't know about, which is what it is. Where we started getting complaints is that we was finding multiple kids. So you got a twelve-year-old kid driving, their siblings or friends around, so you'd have four or five, and I don't want to overexaggerate, I have a picture of five kids on a golf cart running through town. And so that's where the complaints started generating and started forcing us to look a little bit deeper in. And, and then, then you get a, you know, I don't know, I don't know how it happened that day, but I'm gonna say, officer ran into you driving and said, hey, we got, we had to shut it down, so.
And, no, and, and that's perfectly okay, we understand. And, and all of us have insurance on, because it's, it's a moving vehicle, and we all, we all have, we're all licensed operators of vehicles, and we automatically put insurance on just to, for, for, for the safety of the public and ourselves.
So if Mr. Mr. Polka, you can interrupt me if I'm wrong, but right now it's illegal. So what he's coming to you for is to say whether or not it should be legal, because once again, the municipality can vote to make it legal on their street. So if you give us the next thirty days, that way we can really pick our attorney's brain, kind of look at stuff going on, and then the City Council can have some time to deliberate on that. That'll give us some, some, some time to really dig into what needs to be done.
Sound good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
If they talk out at twenty-five, we should just have them rolling up and down Bush Street all the time to suck.
You want a secondary, John?
Missionary Patrol.
And any other public comment before we move? All right, here are none, we'll move to the approval of the April 21st, 2025, where we're pretty, Prairie Grove City Council Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Have a motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, it's the same time, sorry, I lost my motion passes. The treasures report, we sent out, Laura sent out Melch's bank statements. If you have any questions or comments. Here are none, we'll move on to item six, which is our hometown heroes. And we have two awards, which will actually be for multiple people. So, if the Bean Brothers will give me a second, I'll start with Curtis Stewart, so we can get the, the individual done first. And so, for everyone to know, in fact, I'm just going to read the hometown heroes. They, they, they say the exact same thing as, as the title of the person, and it'll kind of give you an idea of what we started looking into with our hometown hero award. What we were trying to find is something to go in between the idea that we give a citizen of the year one time to, in many cases, one person. And so, we were looking at all the organizations and the different things that people do in our community, and went, we really need to be able to honor people in between the, the idea of having the one citizen of the year. So, the hometown hero award reads, the hometown hero award honors those individuals who have unselfishly dedicated their time, energy, and resources to provide, protect, and edify our community. It is designed to confirm and promote the greatness within individuals of our community. It will stand to show the selfless nature of the human spirit. It will be used to classify the individuals or groups that create the unbreakable community of Prairie Grove. With great respect, the admin team of the city of Prairie Grove, the Prairie Grove City Council, and the mayor of Prairie Grove take great privilege in honoring Curtis Stewart for his service and dedication to the community of this great city. On May 19th, 2025, I am honored to award Curtis Stewart the title of hometown hero for his unwavering, his unwavering, excuse me, for his unwavering service for our community of Prairie Grove, Arkansas. And so, if you will entertain me just for a second, and then I'll call you up, Mr. Stewart. So, we usually do a quick rundown, and then if Mr. Stewart wants to add anything. So, Mr. Smann and Mr. Stewart's relationship has probably went back three or four years now, and I'm only going to talk about the last year. And so, when I, when I emphasize this last year, once again, Mr. Stewart has been doing this for three, four, five years before then, as far as my relationship. I'm sure he was doing a lot more before I showed up. But he is one of our bigger, biggest contributors to Prairie Grove Shop with a Cop. He has, yes, one of the big sponsors to our employee lunch. And so when we talk about our employee lunch, because you're going to hear the word employee a lot of times in this one, there's a lot of times that people overlook the trash man or the guy digging the ditch. And, you know, as your mayor, I get a lot of pat on the back, telling you, you're doing a great job, good thing in the city. But look, let me just be honest, I'm not the one out there digging your ditch. I'm not the one out there picking up your garbage, it's those men and women that's out there working every day. And so Curtis has a heart for those men and women, and he's constantly calling going, hey folk, what can I do this month? And what can I do, what about Christmas, what can I do there? And so he's always eager to open up his wallet and help us any way he can. And so he's a huge sponsor to our employee lunch every spring that the Life Ministries puts on, our summer employee pool party. He is the sponsor, he is the reason we have the, the pool party in the summer for all employees. Every Christmas, he gives a smoked turkey, and I don't just mean like a little cornishan, like, it's a huge turkey breast, that him and some of his friends stay up the whole night before and smoke seventy-five turkeys for every city employee to have a smoked turkey at Christmas time. But he does all the awards, not all of the awards, but he does most of the awards and sponsorships for the Prairie Grove Police Department banquet. And even this last week, at the grand opening of the food trucks downtown, he bought every employee for the city of Prairie Grove lunch at the food truck. So he gave out tickets, and all you had to do was go show your ticket. And any meal, no matter the price, it could have been that twenty-five dollar ribs from the barbecue place, Mr. Curtis was springing for it. And so what you hear over and over and over is, he's not honoring the mayor, he's honoring the employees. Like, I don't take it open, he calls me to say, what can I do for your employees? And, and we, we see that as a, as a great, great honor. We thank you for looking at the seventy-five employees under us. The Shop with a Cop is really to benefit the, the kids in our community. And so, once again, it's with great honor that I give the hometown hero awards to Mr. Curtis Stewart.
My wife and I, Kathy, we have the privilege of living here in Prairie Grove, and it's honored to be a part of this community, and very thankful for, for everyone. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And the next one, we're gonna have to have a lot of room. And so, the, the next hometown heroes is actually a group. And it's, they call themselves the Bean Boys. And so Stevie's gonna talk a little bit after me, so I'm gonna leave him, the king's ransom of time here. But just in talking to Stevie today, they started back in COVID as a way to reach out to our community when, when our area had shut down. They have roughly done about twenty sponsorships, or, you know, they cook beans and they cook potatoes. The sheriff's office would come in sometimes and throw some chicken and some hot dogs in. But what they look to do is feed the community. And so, last month at our picnic in the park, it was these gentlemen that came out and fed probably two thousand people with beans and potatoes, chicken and hot dogs. And they've done about twenty of them roughly in that time frame, from hallway as far west as Telefor, all the way up to Bentonville in the tornado, here, here two of them. And so, the, a lot of times, what you see the Bean Brothers do is, we have a local person that is sick with cancer, and we're trying to raise money so they can pay for medical bills, and the Bean Boys will step up, and they'll sponsor everything on their own, they'll cook it all, and all you have to do is come show up, buy some of their beans, and then all the proceeds go to whatever fundraiser they're doing at that time. And just this year alone, they've cooked, and you can correct me on this, two hundred pounds of beans, no, excuse me.
It's in the last month.
Yeah, in the last month, two hundred pounds of beans, two hundred and seventy pounds of potatoes, five hundred chicken legs, and five hundred hot dogs, and that's just been the last thirty days. And so, it is with great honor that we offer the hometown heroes to the Bean Boys. And will all y'all join in? Truly, truly, this is a group of men that are, that are dedicating their time to give back to the community. So I have, Stevie, I have one frame, and I have ten of them that's, that's identical, that is not in frames. And so when y'all gentlemen lead, please take that. And Stevie, before we give out the award, would you like to say, everyone that's in your group, and add a little bit about maybe some upcoming events and why y'all do this?
Well, right now, we kind of cleared on hold, because I think we burnt the bridge last, last month. Our job is, is fun, but it's work. And these guys, if we didn't have this, we didn't have this crew right here, it wouldn't happen. Because these guys show up, we start at five-thirty over, thinking they get the park in the morning, we started cooking, and we just kept cooking and cooking, and lines kept getting bigger and bigger. But I really want to thank these guys, because they are the man of the sky. We've got a whole good crew here. And we started, give you a little background, we started at COVID with two pots, with, with two of them old candle pots, cooking about forty pounds of beans. Last week, or two weeks ago, whatever it was at the park, we cooked a hundred and fifty pounds of beans. Each pot, we had eight pots. And it takes about two rick of wood to do all that, and we had to cut wood, because everything we do is wood. We do it their own style, we fry potatoes. And all, we all know what stump jumpers are. They come out from under a brush hole, and they look like a big, we got egg-shaped ones and we got round ones. And that's what we fry our potatoes in it. So it's a, it's a process, and we really, if y'all have anything you'd like for the Bean Boys to come do, we'd love to come help you.
Stevie, would you introduce everyone?
Oh, gosh. Murph Fair, Mike Dobbs, Mike Johnston, Lex Wetzel, Wayne Carnan, Mark Hedrick, and I'm Steve Marlowe.
Let's try to get in for, let's try to get in for a picture.
Give him between minutes.
Whatever, I'm gonna make faces by my dad.
Y'all can nail that into the trailer.
Lex, where's that going on the wagon?
It's going in front of the bake.
Oh, you're perfect timing.
Enjoy it.
We, we just gonna, hey, thank y'all, gentlemen, we're just gonna give them a second, kind of let it clear out, and then, and then we'll go right back to our meeting.
I'll wait.
That's been in and out the crowd for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, but you know what, what's more wonderful than having that many people show up to, to applaud good people in our town?
Hundred percent.
Moving on to unfinished business, this will be an ordinance to eliminate yard waste pickup. And so before we start deliberating, would anyone like community feedback? Would anyone like to talk about it? I'd rather hear your voice before I tell you.
So, um, when I saw this on the agenda last month, and you tabled it and was going to talk about it today, I made a point of going and talking to my neighbor. I made a point of going and talking to my neighbors. Also, some other people I know that I work with that lives in this community, that they're not my neighbors. Somewhere else in the city. This service for the grass clipping part of it, I can understand the part about the limb service, that, that's, that is a big to do. Uh, and yes, feel like some of that's maybe being abused. But the grass clipping part, when I left that meeting last month, the very next day when I left to go to work and came home from work, I found fifteen houses that had grass clipping bags sitting out at the end of the driveway. So that service is being used. That service is people that's wanting to maintain their yard and keep this city beautiful, keep their home beautiful. Just like me. This is something I, I, I really don't like to see disappear. I use it, neighbors use it, I've asked them about it and they said, yes, we use it. And I've even have somebody in the market that's buying a brand new home here. And it's a service that she was planning on using as well at her new home. I feel like it keeps my street clean, my street beautiful, to have that service and have it picked up. I have a couple of times rentals in the property that has grass clippings out on the sidewalks of the yard. And yeah, I'll go by and say, hey, can you please sweep that up? But I just don't want to see something like that disappear. The people I talked to, I had at least ten people on the street, four people out here amongst the city. There's that many people that wants to continue that service throughout the city. I hope that's something that you all will consider and keep. Like I said, the limb part, I can understand. That is a big to do, to have to try to figure out what to do with. There are businesses out here that will take that trees, downed trees, limbs, larger limbs and this to pick up. But the grass part, I'd like to see that continued so that this community, some of these peoples in their home that really love their home would be able to keep up and maintain. I just, my fear is that it won't be maintained, it'll be people bagging, they don't have a way to take it to get rid of it. It sits on the side of the yard, it gets wet, breaks way, it's inviting birds and animals to come and chew at it. Um, or they won't bag it and they'll just leave it sitting in the grass and the sidewalk in the street. That is a compliance problem when it comes up to that. And so it kind of curbs, if we can keep that up and keep that from happening, that would be great.
Thank you. Man, what was your name? I'm sorry.
Name's Pauline Kennedy.
Anyone else?
Call this address, four twenty, Captain Reed.
Well, before we get too far into it, and so just so I can even address Ms. Kennedy on this, and you may have seen it a little bit on Facebook and, and we'll, we'll let you know that there's no decision that doesn't weigh heavy on us. I mean, for the most part, we've been talking about, me and Chuck's been talking about, gosh, for a year and a half now. We have spoke to the council about it just on, not just last month, but hey, listen, we, we're looking into stuff. We, we got, you know, we're kind of trying to dig into how brush services work. And so this has been a very long process before I came to the council and said, we really need to have a conversation about this. And but, but this is part of the conversation, so um, we, we are glad to hear your voice. Because even though it weighs heavily on us and makes that decision even harder, but it's the, it's the truth of why we're here is to try to represent our city as well as we can. And so, so for the whole community to, to understand some of the things that we've been looking at is, you know, and I'll say this before I even go forward on this, because the idea of whether or not our town will become trashy again. And so if the one voice you've heard from me since I came in here is that we're gonna have a beautiful town. And like, that is one thing that I've said over and over and over again. Um, and so we, we have to, we have to solve that problem as well. We, we wouldn't get rid of the service to let our town go trashy, like that's not gonna happen. The secondary to that is the business side of the allocation of taxpayer money and how we use those funds. And so what's going on right now is that something that had started many, many, many years ago when we were a thousand or fifteen-hundred population, thank Larry even told me it started almost forty years ago. When one of our workers would bring it to his house, he had a big land and he was just taking it out to his land and burning. Eventually, we had to move it to our wastewater treatment facility. And at that time, when we used to burn it, there was no houses around that. So we were way on the outskirts of the city. And it was a way of us being able to deal with it as we were, as we were progressing forward. So if you fast forward over the last twenty, thirty years, we have taken what, what we believe was costing us a few thousand. And, and this is just a rough estimate. And so, so let me, let me throw that out there, but I actually think it's a conservative estimate that we're spending about seventy-five thousand dollars a year now because we don't bring it to the back. We stopped burning it outside of during emergency times where we can get the permit to burn it. Part of the reason why we can't burn it is because we have houses, now subdivisions living next to it. And when we set that thing on fire, that smoke runs for days at a time. And so then you have people with asthma and breathing issues and the house fills up with smoke. And so we, we run, we ran into that problem, so, so the disposal of it adds an, adds another cost. Fifty-four dollars a ton, am I right on that one?
If it's the grass flipping, it's fifty-four. If you go to the heavier brush, it's seventy-three. And when we started on it up to the landfill, they came out and checked the first couple loads and we'll let them separate one from the other. After several loads, they just kept sending them all to where the heavy brush went. It didn't matter if it took grass flipping or what, it was the sadness, you know, all the time. And they didn't come out and look at it from a scaled house anymore.
So we, so we see in this as it's costing the city about seventy-five thousand dollars to run a free service. And it just goes back to a principle that we know, there's nothing in this world that's actually free. Like you're paying for something and it's coming out of your taxpayer money is going into us. And then we have to allocate it as well as we can. So maybe the argument is, well, y'all are doing it well, it's a service to the community. The problem is that service is putting us in a hole in the sanitation department. So when we started talking about it over the last year and a half and was, we was trying to articulate how much money this was costing us, what we started looking at was, well, if we're in a seventy-five thousand dollar hole, there's, there's three ways to really deal with it. And that's that, well, we can just stay in the hole. And as we grow in population, that hole is gonna get bigger and bigger and bigger. And seventy-five will be eighty-five, will be a hundred, will be a hundred and fifty. And twenty years from now, when I'm no longer your mayor and someone else is sitting in my seat, I'll be arguing with the customer base about the two hundred thousand dollar hole they're in every single year. And part of our issue, you, you said the word abuse, that you feel like maybe people do abuse the big trees versus the grass. But really, it's not an abuse because we allow it, right? According to our code, we say, throw it out there, we'll pick it up for free. And so uh, it's not even an abuse of the system, it is the system. And that, that's what I'm asking these ladies, these men and women to, to look at. So when we go into a deficit or a hole at the end of the year, when Chuck who's over the street department sanitation and Mike Dobbs who runs, he's our outside leader sanitation, we have a few workers here as well with sanitation. Like when they come to us at the end of the year and go, we need another employee or we need new equipment because those are the dump truck we use. And so, and I go, we don't have the money. And everyone goes, well, where's the money? Well, we started with a seventy-five thousand dollar debt. Because we dug a hole inside the free service because since we'd never progressed and I were thinking for, for that time period as the population was growing, what, what we did was population and use of service was rising as we were staying level. But that meant we were digging a bigger and a bigger and a bigger hole. So like when, when we talk, I knew anytime you take away a service from a community, like the community is not gonna like it. I, if you've been cutting my grass for twenty years and then you show up tomorrow to tell me you're no longer cutting my grass, I'm not gonna enjoy that conversation. Well, I guess what I'm trying to say is just that, that's the idea of, like, we, you only have so much money in the pot and we have to be good stewards to that money. When I look at that debt, I don't know if we'd be in a good steward to that money. And the only way I can, I can go forward is to, is to have these conversations with these men and women. And so obviously, we can keep on going and that hole can get deeper, deeper and deeper. We can charge every customer, it's sanitation. So we can add money to everyone's sanitation bill and all four thousand, we probably about forty-five hundred, but all four thousand customers can be charged for brush service whether you use it or not. And that, just quick math on seventy-five thousand currently and the four thousand sits around a dollar sixty-five. So we can charge a dollar sixty-five to everyone's bill every month and to make the money, we need to stay flat. But we'd probably have to go higher because the, the other side of it is, is that we have one part-time guy that does it. And when he can't keep up with it, we have to call other crews over. So when people's going, why can't these streets get fixed? Tell me, Mike, why can't the streets get fixed? Because they busy hauling brush. And why can't get this done? Because every time we have free time, we're playing catch-up on the thing, we've fallen behind on it. And, and the other side of it is, is, which becomes very, very practical on this, is we can go into the business, but then whoever uses it, we have to charge them adequately for the service. And I think that's a legitimate conversation on that one as well. But if I'm gonna charge you the same thing the third party's gonna charge, then, then why, then why even go into the business? Does that make sense? Like, the city goes into the business of stuff to keep costs down. And that way, we could do that as all customers pay a certain percentage. So that way, the person using it stays at a rate. And so they have to decide if charging four thousand customers a brush service that, I'm, I'm just guessing, seven hundred and fifty of us use, is that, is that practical or not? And, and once again, it's a, it's a difficult decision, but I'm just explaining all of that to tell you that this, this is only came out not because we want to take a service from the community. I, my job is predicated on whether or not you do, you think I do a good job, I'm fair, I'm compassionate to people. Because the truth of it is, is you just won't vote for me again. And so like, I know when I go, I'm gonna take a service from these people, that may mean that my job's in jeopardy. But I'm looking at it from, from the realm of the whole thing. From all nine thousand citizens, from all four thousand five hundred households, from the employees that can't get their job done and the debt that we, that we continue to dig into. And I'm trying to make a decision based on that. And, and it's a, and it's a difficult decision. It really, really is a difficult decision.
Well, has the city ever looked at maybe composting any of this?
We did that for a while and we still have a compost pile out there. So part of our problem with compost is that we, uh, we used to, we used to, we used to, um, tell me, Mike, mulch it, we used to mulch it and, but we can only take up to two inches on the limbs. But the problem is the customer doesn't put the two inch limbs over here and the rest over here. The tree comes down, you pile it up. And, and so we don't have the manpower to separate all that stuff. And so we do have a massive pile out at our wastewater plant that we waiting for it to biodegrade. But what should take a few months of us rotating in and out is taking years. When we pick up the bags, I don't know, and I'll, and I'll let the, Mike, go ahead, when we.
Problem is trash, yard work. We can use it with the dump. There's trash.
People, they're picking up their yard, they Walmart sack and then shove it down into the paper bag and put more stuff on top of it. And when we take it down the road to the shredder, here comes half a dozen Walmart sacks flying out of the shredder.
And we have people that would want to come and get it, but when they sell the trash in it, I don't know. So it's, I mean, everything we try is, is hell back.
And then we had it where it was exposed to the public, it was outside of our fence. And we're not, we don't have a large enough place that's controlled without putting it outside the fence. And so people were coming in on the weekends, usually tree services, and offloading their big trailers and their dump trucks and dumping it beside the dog pound. We show up on Monday morning, we can't even get down the driveway to the dog pound for all this brush pile up. We tend to just bring out the backhoe, like all the pushing along the pile. Now we've got big limbs, tree trucks, all mixed in with the mulch and shredded stuff. And so it just ended up being just a big waste pile.
It, it truly is a great service. I, I mean, uh, we recorded, we're face to face, it is a, it's truly a great service. And for us to be able, and we're probably one of the only cities that do, that doesn't. Most of our cities, I've talked to some of our neighboring towns, because they've all went third party, so like, we self-sufficient. We have the employees, they've went to cords or waste management and they don't pick it up. We're, we're probably one of the only cities that even pick it up anymore. The problem is, we, 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 we don't have the adequate personnel to keep up with, with what we're picking up. We don't have the space, we just did the wastewater expansion. We'll start finding the next wastewater expansion in the next three years, that's where the compost pile is. So three years from now, as we start the next design and move forward, but that's it. We've ran out of room and there is no more room at the wastewater expansion to, to do the expansion.
A compost operation takes a very large area. Large concrete slab where they stack the mulch or shredded compost in. And then there's a series of turning it over. And they have a big machine that's just like a big excavator come down, because there was conveyor belt and it churns it and then spits it back out to back. And they have like three rows, each one is in a different state of composition. Well, they take months to get it ready. If you know, going over to Fayetteville, they only sell it or give it away maybe three times a year. And they take a maximum amount because they know how much they can turn over and get rid of it by the end of the year. Well, this year for twenty twenty-five, they reached that goal by April first. So when we reached out to them to see if we could take our smaller stuff, the grass and the small clippings, they said we couldn't take on another contract. So that meant everything, even if we take it to a transfer station, we're gonna send it to them, would all go to landfill.
And, and so that's why I'm saying to me, now, once again, one of the options is keep, just keep on digging a hole. And that really is an option, y'all, I'm not trying to be stupid on this, that is an option. I, I work under your authority, you tell me to keep going forward, we keep on going forward. But I really think there's two options here. You eliminate it or you find a way to make it cost-effective. That cost-effective means everyone pays or the individual pays. And if the individual pays, then we have to charge the same amount as the third party. And might as well just let the third party, small business come in and do the service.
Chuck, do you, Mike, wanna know how much grass and clippings would pick up a brush? Or is that broke down that way?
There's no way to break it down.
Break it down.
We just have people call in to, hey, I've got some stuff in my private yard I need you to pick up. And that averages seventy-five, eighty a month.
They know it's mainly brush or mainly grass.
We have some that use the grass clippings every weekend. They mow the yard on Monday, they want it picked up on Tuesday. If it's not picked up on Tuesday, they're calling grass picking.
Mr. Olrich, Mrs. Green.
From a budget standpoint, the Old Way Sanitation Department has been the budget that we really struggled with the last three years. We've done everything in our power not to raise rates because we're, our expenses are right at where our revenue is. We have never paid a landfill to take our brush and grass clippings and that's where we're at now. I understand you've already held some for the landfill. If we continue that where the budget is right now, rates will invariably have to be raised. I mean, I can tell you that for a fact, next year we'll be looking at it with fingers. We, I, I'm not even sure you're gonna be able to, even this year.
Without doing a, a budget transfer in four months from another department.
That'll come out of your reserve and your reserve, okay?
We, we, I mean, we're struggling with the decision. I know it sounds like our mind's made up, my mind's made up only on the idea that we have to do something, right? And I, and so let me be fair on this, seventy-five thousand dollars gives me a new employee, maybe even an employee and a half. But at the end of the year, when they come ask me from employees, they still gonna probably hear no. Because once again, seventy-five thousand just digs us out the hole. We just become even at that point. It's not like that seventy-five thousand dollar now all of a sudden magically appears. That, that is just taking us out of a debt.
Only about seventeen or eighteen thousand of that this year is labor. That's our one part-time employee. The rest of it is landfill piece.
Landfill truck, we started doing, over the last few months, we started doing how many, how many employees we had, how many. Then, then you have to have a truck because you can't mix the, the limbs and uh, trash in it. So then we have to have isolated truck for it, it just, it's a, it is very, very complicated, with the unfortunate truth behind it. Also, do y'all have anything?
Can you state on record what is being eliminated and what is still allowed?
So if, if you eliminate brush service, all of it's eliminated. Now, you have the right to do anything else. And e- even if it's voted on tonight, nothing goes into effect for sixty days. So what, where we are today will be where we are for the next sixty days. And so we'll, we'll have, you still have more time, I guess, think about it, even you eliminated, but the beast, short on the answer is everything. So grass clippings, uh, tree services, all of that stuff, we, we're no longer in that business.
Will there still be a bulk pickup? Like that?
But like spring cleanup?
That they'll get once a year or something?
We don't pick up limbs for that.
On spring cleanup deal?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, oh, we don't take brush in. Pretty gone wrong, but Boston Mountain will not take brush.
They'll only take it if, well, they won't take it anymore because they just transferred to the landfill now. Because the only place that they could take the small limbs was to the Fayetteville Combusting Center. And because they won't take it anymore. And we were gonna pay Boston Mountain a higher rate than it is at Eagle Vista. Because they're gonna, of course, get charged for the service. They're gonna wanna get paid for what they have to do handling it once we drop it off to them. Because they're going to, of course, get charged for the service. They're going to want to get paid for what they have to do handling it once we drop it off to them. And so if it's cheaper by the pound or ton, just take it straight to Eagle Vista. It's still an option to take it out there. They won't take the larger ones. They said they can't handle it.
And I and I still think, not still think, I mean, we should be, you know, we had a tornado last Halloween. So in an emergency time. The city needs to step up and do what it takes, no matter the cost. We're we're really just talking about, hey, I wanted to trim my leaves back or my limbs back and then.
A customer that still wants to utilize hauling off their limbs can still take yard waste and limbs up to a dime in diameter. So basically the size of your finger, they will take up to that at Eagle, at Boston Mountain, but they'll turn around and haul it to Eagle Vista on nothing. They won't take anything larger than a dime. And so if somebody's cleaning up the yard after a storm, Boston Mountain won't take it. They'll have to take it up to the landfill.
Yeah, but I think that's where we stepped in as a city.
Yeah, no, I I think if there's a state of emergency or something, that's. Boys.
Yes.
Or we did grass clippings only and no brush. What does that do?
They'll have to have a truck, an employee, and take it to the landfill.
It does reduce our costs. So maybe instead of talking about seventy-five thousand dollar hit. And I'm throwing numbers up at this point. Maybe it's a twenty-five thousand dollar hit. And we can, we could probably, try, Mike, you got to tell me about this compost. Once we run out of room, it's done. But maybe for the next three years. And.
And wait, have you done the grass clippings? You have to do a trash. And I mean, you have to know about every bag and get all the trash to have a compost pile. And I think you got to have permits for so much compost.
I don't know if it's a little is that sounded down a little bit longer. It used to be over fifty tons a year.
And and we just can't get rid. So nobody wants to.
And the only thing we have available is the wastewater treatment facility that now has housing held on three sides. And we know it's a matter of time before something goes on the west side of the creek and then it'll be completely ground. Composting is just like anything else. If it starts rotting, it's going to cut off a little bit of the note. One thing we don't have any control over.
So basically, if we take a press, then we will haul in the landfill.
And we just don't have the land anymore to try and take care of it. When the wastewater trench treatment facility was built, it was a mile from closest house. I looked at maps and stuff back when it was built in the seventies. And uh and now everything's built right up to the gate.
Well, and I'm not trying to give y'all a contingency, but but let's just be honest. We're changing, we're we're changing our code. So if if we do something, if you make a decision tonight and six months down the line, you go, huh, this is not working. We just changed the code. I mean, that's the truth. And so over the next two months, if y'all want to entertain grass clippings. What we can try to do is divide how much grass clippings we pick up, like make that Alan's job. And that way he can kind of keep a record of it all. And then may, I don't know, gosh. If we separate them on the trucks, it's going to be hard to know how much is grass clipping versus limbs.
You would have to.
Because we have to run separate routes. It just.
Could it not just right now, Lee, I picked up five bags here, seven bags here?
Yeah, just.
But they're basically on weight. And one bag weighs ten pounds and another one weighs seventy.
Because then at least in two months, I could come back and say, it's about the end. It's possible it's just much to be done.
He said, I don't have a problem with it. I can grab two bags and walk to, you have to understand, he's he's retired. And he's going to do this much longer. But he said, I'll grab two bags, I'll carry to the truck, go back truck. He said, sometimes somebody cleaned out their flower ban that's got a bunch of dead leaves or some old compost in it. He says, I can't pick it up on myself.
Well, yeah, the rocks. I mean, all all kinds of debris in it. I mean, it's not just pure grass. How are you ever doing that? There's even have this pure grass. But there's somebody that can come in and somebody go over their yard and pour them and back that up and then they stack it up. So, you know, that's how that's usually when you get a true grass. And I mean, that's mainly why Alan picks up anyway. He he does get a lot of brush, but we have to go out in the truck to back it up.
I think my concern. I think the grass clippings are fine. However, if the point is to not go in the hole anymore, still doing grass clippings is still putting us in the hole. So I don't know that it's necessarily discussing if we want to do it or not. It's if we're willing to lose twenty-five thousand dollars a year or seventy-five thousand dollars a year. Or not lose any money at all. I mean, that's. Because a- at this point, either way, we're losing money with them.
So let's talk about that just for a second because I also said we don't have to eliminate, we can charge the customer.
Correct.
So now the big problem when we talk about trees that get laid down on the ground is that Alan can't do that. And so then we have to pull the people off the street department. Sanitation has to come in. Now we're using backhoes, dump trucks, right? It it becomes a a very, very massive operation at that point. So if we're just talking about grass clippings, then then theoretically, it probably becomes a lot easier to charge the customer. Am I correct, Mike? Am I am I being a little bit facetious about it? You think it's? And so we may just have to look at just many bags for, because I mean, look, here's here's the truth, even with grass clippings, right? The, to go back to, there's nothing free. It's it's no difference on, we regulate their garbage bags. If we're picking up this. This many garbage bags, it costs this much money. If it's in this water, it costs this much money. So theoretically, we could pay, we could probably pay for Alan. And at least a small truck that you would need for grass clippings. If the price was going back to the customer on, you have, and I'm just throwing out a number here, right? There are two bags is five bucks, four bags is ten bucks or whatever, or every bags a dollar. And to try to recoup that, and we could spend the next two months trying to figure out what the fair wage is on that one. Because I don't think that there's a third, I'm sure there's someone that'll come pick it up, but it's not like it's a tree service where. Someone, that that's not someone's necessary business is to come pick up grass clippings, I wouldn't imagine, huh?
Some of them haul it off. You know, when they mow the yard, they they thought they take it.
But we have to have a truck isolated for that. We would have to have an employee isolated for that. We have an employee that's part-time. That works seasonal for about six months out of the year.
But then then, okay, get rid of grass, but there's leaves. There's bags of leaves in the vault. I mean, and there's just tons and tons and tons. You know, are are we going to pick that up too? Is that going to go in with the grass? Because they back it up. I mean, I'm just being serious. I mean, it ain't only in summertime deal, it's wintertime too. And it takes us all winter to get people's leaves for some reason. They'll bag up twenty-five bags. And the next week, they got twenty-five whole bags out there. It just, it just continues on and on and on. And it's just not, you go get it wiped out, it's open. It it aren't that way. It's it's going and going. So we're also would be considering that too. Because I mean.
Well, then it's not seasonal anymore. It's a. And so the the price would have, the price would have to pay for a year-round employee and. There you go. You're getting up there now.
And we got to consider, I mean, Alan is a hard worker, but he's telling me I can't include.
Well, I think if we moved on, I mean, Alan, we would have to let Alan go back to his retirement and we'd have to find someone. Someone a little bit younger to come in and and run that stuff.
Could we? Yes. Could we consider city? Get like trash bag or waste bags that were given paid for, like the trash bags, the trash service. So there would be stamp city or whatever, and you would charge the cost obviously of them and then plus the. You know, like you said, a dollar bag or whatever, that would ultimately cover the person. And then it's whoever wants to use it is, like you said, taking that cost. But then our whoever picks it up knows if it's in that bag, just like the green trash bag. That's theirs. Well, you buy you buy stickers. So, yeah, I mean, the stickers on them.
They used to do bags, didn't they?
Right, yeah, they used to. The bags got too expensive.
So, yeah, that's it. That's all.
And then you would almost be able to identify who was putting trash in the bags as well. Because it would be, you would know who's.
So if they put trash in there.
You would have a general idea.
You have to go through it all the way?
You'd have to know.
Put it down in the bag every time to see if you put trash.
And really, at that point, we're not bringing it here, we're bringing it to. And that's part of our thoughts too.
If you're going to the landfill truck, can it not go in? Well, it can't go to your sanitation ward.
No, you can't mix them.
No, but at that point, they've paid for the bag and they've paid for the service. So even if it is going to the landfill, that's probably where it's going anyways, if they do it themselves.
Yeah, it is. No, we would just say, if he was asking if we could throw it in with the trash.
I got it.
They're making one run. You still have to have an isolated truck.
Weather update, apparently they're, are they actually tracking tornado? Last truck for two rotations coming up. Lincoln's got signs going off. They've got us in a cone. I've not heard of the cone. It's it's. It's not cross Oklahoma markets online.
Have we ever stopped the council meeting in the middle of the council meeting?
We we just keep watching it.
Okay, just keep on watching. Well, if nothing else, we got a, we got a big storm cellar cellar, right in that big old building.
I mean, just for a budget rise and just sort of makes sense and something I I feel like, you know, we could possibly bring up later on. But I I want to make a motion to adopt the ordinance as to make the the waste pick up.
So I do have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Pro call.
First House?
Yes.
Audrey Wessel?
Yes.
Free Grant?
Yes.
Tony Cunningham?
Yes.
Doug Stenbaum?
Yes.
Kevin Andrews?
Yes.
All the bars.
An ordinance to eliminate yard waste pair.
I'm making a motion to adopt the ordinance and the. Let's spend the rule.
We do have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Pro call.
Oh, yes.
Yes. No.
Tony Cunningham?
Yes.
Doug Stenbaum?
Yes.
Kevin Andrews?
Yes.
All the bars?
Motion, motion passes seven oh two. That was the only no, huh?
I know, no second.
Oh, you know it on the second.
Yes, they just sent it to the.
So it sits on first reading?
It's on first reading. At least we bring it back next week, right? I mean, next month.
I just, I I would like to look into a. A fee to do it. I think it's a good thing to do, but I don't think we need to lose money on it.
Do you want a fee on grass clippings or are you looking for the fee on?
No, I'm fine with the brush, like the large limb removal. I don't think that's our job. But I do think just like trash, if we can designate a bag and that cost goes onto the customer. Yeah, grass flipping and leaves, then I would like to.
I don't want to cross the board too. I don't use it.
Exactly.
I don't want to pay for the fee, even if I might use it. So I think kind of like. Farmington's doing with the sticker you go buy. If you want to send your bag out there, you're going to pay enough to cover the cough brown.
I just want to be sustainable with the employees and something for the citizens of that lot.
Just to move on, but your good system is every employee pay, I mean, every every customer pays. Or the individual pays. And so and I I want to remind you, if the individual pays, especially when you talk about big stuff. Then we're, all we're doing is taking business away from someone who already does it. Because at that point, we have to charge them the same thing that a business could jump in. So we just keep that moment.
Parker, can we tweak this in the middle of the readings or not?
Yeah.
Y'all want to see Parker bring it back with grass flipping comment?
Yep. Make that motion.
I make a motion that we. I mean. Yeah, set a fee for grass and leaf flipping pickup from the city. And eliminate brush pickup.
So I do have a motion, but we have a second by Doug. Any further discussion? Pro call.
First House?
No.
Audrey Wessel?
Yes.
Free Grant?
Yes.
Tony Cunningham?
Yes.
Doug Stenbaum?
Yes.
Kevin Andrews? Good luck, yeah.
We go back to first readings. So what first reading do you want? The one that Chris made or the one that we made? Well, I guess we, I guess we own a new motion. So first reading next month will be grass flipping. Right?
Well, it's it's been through first reading, it's been on the second reading.
On second reading. Well, I'm just saying we've had two.
We may, we may have more than one ordinance to vote on.
Is that how you want to do it?
I can draft up two. They went possible tornado in Stillwell. It's headed right towards Lincoln and Prairie Grove. It'll be linked in by seven nineteen, Prairie Grove, seven twenty-four.
My family's in.
Now they say it's PG seven seventeen.
I've never, I've never faced this before. Y'all, do we cancel it right now and go back tomorrow?
Oh, bye, mom. Glad you're staying to watch your daughter's safety. Love you so much.
Is it that easy? Do we make, do we make the motion to suspend, pick up tomorrow? Hey, I have a motion in a second to suspend city council meetings as y'all will pick up tomorrow at six P M. All in favor? Y'all tomorrow. That's what I, that's what I wanted you to do. Hey, hey, did you bring Bray, Bray's at Gabby's?
I'm out at the, across the street in the.
You're fine right now. You've got, you've got fifteen minutes.
Totally far away.